Well, good evening and welcome to our December work session. Today is Thursday, December 7th, 2023. It is 5:30 PM and we are in the central building, second floor conference room. And we have three items on our agenda tonight, beginning with our staff spotlight from our language department. So Eric, if you'd like to introduce our guests.
I would. Thank you so much for the time again, as we do with each of our work sessions, to give some time to highlight some of the great work our staff are doing in their buildings with our students. So tonight, Mary and Nancy are here to share with us what's our happenings and plans and what's on the docket here for our language department at our junior, senior high schools. So I'll turn it over to them.
Okay. All right. Do we stand up or?
Whatever you guys are comfortable doing.
Okay, we're good. Okay, I am Nancy Kaplan.
I'm Mary Gilson.
And we are here to talk about an upcoming travel opportunity that we have discussed with students and with our travel company, this Explorica that we have worked with for several years now. And we would like to share with you about Peru.
So usually during the school year for our spring trips, we're on a rotation with the band and choir. So band.
Choirs.
Choirs this year, band was last year. So we'll be up for our trip in 2025. That's just kind of the rotation that we've done. The pandemic kind of messed with that a little bit, but you know, we're back on track. The past three springs that we've traveled, we've gone to Costa Rica and it's a great trip. There are a lot of students who are interested in that, but we thought about mixing it up also. And I've never been to South America and so Nancy would like to go back as well. So that's kind of why we chose Peru. We did talk over with some of the Spanish Club students and there were a few of them, quite a few of them who were interested also in Peru. So that's kind of why we chose this trip. The company, I don't know if Nancy already mentioned that we travel with is Explorica. And I've always traveled with Explorica. I know Nancy's traveled with one or two other companies as well, but it's a great company. There's somebody that we are always in contact with here in the States to help us plan for the trip, but also we have a tour director who's with us throughout the entire trip. They pick us up at the airport, find us there, and then they make sure that we get back and dropped off at the airport too on our way home. So definitely feels very safe traveling with Explorica. I don't know. Nancy, you want to take it over and talk about the itinerary?
Oh, sure. Yes, and we do have a lot of confidence in our company, Explorica. They have taken care of all needs and answered questions and have been very responsive when issues have arrived. Yes, oh, so our itinerary, we, it usually takes a day to travel. So our first day will be Ola Lima and we'll meet our tour director. Like Mary said, they meet us right at the airport. So we are always with somebody and with our guide. And so usually what happens is we check in the hotel, we would have dinner that night, and then the next day we would, we would start our touring. And so what they have there is like sightseeing in Lima and the government palace, city hall and different places there. And when I spoke with our tour person today, our Explorica person, she said we would be staying in a hotel in Miraflores, which is a suburb, and that's very common for travelers to do. And then we'll go into the city the next day to see all the Lima landmarks. And then on day three, we will fly from Lima to Cusco. And this was true in the previous trip that I took with a different company. With the Andes mountains and the terrain, it's just so much more efficient and all tours, almost any tour, they have us fly rather than try to take a bus through the mountains. And so we will fly to Cusco and see sights there. And then the next day, more sights and with the different places, the Ollanta Tambo, I remember going to that one years ago also. And then some of these other ones that are different would be the wildlife sanctuary visit. I do not, we did not go to that, but so we'll get to see even more than we got to see last time. And then into the sacred valley, a train ride to Aguascalientes to Machu Picchu. And there's like a town near there that we will be in and we take a train to go there. And I asked if this was still true and our person didn't know, but to go in, you have to zigzag up with the train. And she didn't know if we still had to do that, but when I looked online to see all the train tours, it looked like really good trains and like really a nice ride for us. So then we would visit Machu Picchu. And then the next day, I asked her what Machu Picchu free time would entail. And she said, like, we'll actually be in Machu Picchu just one of the days, but there's areas to visit around there and that's where our free time will be. She said, instead of taking us on more hikes, we'll get free time to explore that area on our own. And then back to, then in Cusco, back to Cusco, the Udomamba River rafting excursion. We did not take one the last time I was there. And when I asked about the river rafting, she said it was a level three out of level of five as far as like the rapids and things. And so we got that information. And then it does take time to fly back. So we would fly back to Lima and then have some time in Lima and Miraflores, the suburb around there, and then fly home on the next day.
Sounds amazing.
Yes.
So looking at what's included with the trip, so all of our airfare will be included. We'll have breakfast. This trip also includes lunch and dinner. Some of the other trips, like when we went to Europe, lunch was more on our own, but since we'll be together, you know, going on further excursions, we'll be provided lunch each day, which is nice. Our eight overnight stays at the hotel, the students will share usually in triples or quads. We'll have our tour director, like we said, with us the entire time. Everything that we go to, like the entrance to Machu Picchu is going to be included there and the train tickets. Yeah, the note on there just saying like at the airport, we might have to pay for our meals that first day and the last day. And the students will be responsible also for getting their passports, but the price is down a little bit more. If you can scroll just a tad. For students, if they sign up, maybe hopefully around January time, it would be the $38.50. If there's adult travelers that want to go with them, the $42.90 would be their price since they will have separate hotel rooms, the adults, and they'll have to pay adult entrance fees to get into our different venues that we want to go see. But yeah, we've used Explorica several times in the past. So going online and making an account and having parents use it to make payments on it, it's pretty efficient.
Yeah, so whenever, if they aren't able to take care of a payment or they have a concern, they tell one of us and then I go to my, our person Jean, and then she will advocate for our people. So she has several times for us just to make sure things, that everyone gets their payments the way they need or to adapt to their situation. And then our sign up deadline or to take advantage of the discount is now January 11th.
We do have some fundraisers still that we would do before we go on our trip. So we sold butter braids last month or two, and then we sell pastry puffins in the spring as well. So students are going to be committed to going, they can still sell this year and then twice next year as well. You know, some students mostly participate in the fundraiser to pay off their club dues so they don't have to pay the club dues, but a lot of people do also build up their Spanish Club account to be able to get a couple hundred dollars back for the trip. I know one time a student sold 99 butter braids in one sale, so she got almost $500. So it's, you have to obviously work to sell that many butter braids, but it is something for the students to help get some spending money on the trip.
And we also have some opportunities with concession stands that could cover their club dues so then their fundraising can go more directly to their travel account. We have, it's basically like the itinerary is the current, this is the most up to date with the deadlines as far as the up to $100 scholarship. Would you all like a copy of this or if you're okay with the one in front? Really, the only difference is now it's January 11th. After we spoke with our person and we said, we need more time. And so she was willing to extend that for us so that students could like have this time to think about it, but also during the break, talk to family members and maybe even start thinking about summer jobs. We've had students that can earn enough money over the summer to fund this or partially fund it. Maybe sometimes maybe a relative will partially fund it and then the student earns the rest of the cost.
What students are eligible to go on this trip?
Our students that are in Spanish 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Okay.
Are eligible to go. So any students that are, and actually that would even include ninth graders this year because they would be in 10th grade next year. We like to have them at least have completed ninth grade unless a parent is going along with, then we had a situation where we've allowed that ninth grader to go along with. You said your last trips were to Costa Rica?
During the springtime, we've gone to Costa Rica, yep, in 2000.
How many kids do you usually have go?
Those trips were all about 25, 24.
Yes.
Yeah. This past summer, we went to Spain and France and we had about the same.
Yeah, about that, about 20.
Yeah.
And we had some parents go along too. And so we had a combination of students and parents.
Yeah. The chaperone ratio is six to one. So for every six students, we'll have a chaperone go. So we should get at least 12 paying participants. So Nancy and I will go and then see who else is on the list for after that.
I have a question, but it's not about the trip. So can I ask that before you go?
Sure.
I noticed looking at the second trimester schedule at the high school, I think Mary, you're teaching this, it says a couple of sections of Spanish 7.
Yep.
Could you explain what that is?
So the seventh graders, I've had this since I've been working here, but it's an exploratory class. So they have a rotation each trimester where they try something new with our electives. So they take health one trimester, FACS or Family and Consumer Sciences one trimester and Spanish for one trimester. And then eighth grade, they have different electives too. So like Mr. Kushel teaches gateway, gateway to technology for one of the trimesters too. Just to, you know, get their feet wet a little bit and learn about different things. So when they get to high school, they can choose to, you know, choose which electives they want to take. You don't have to take Spanish in high school, even though I would like more of them too. I like that they have options, but yeah, it's just to see, is this what I want to do later on when I get to high school and they can make those choices for themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mary and Nancy? Well, it sounds like a really, really cool trip, so yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming.
Yes, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
And then would we ask about like approval for the trip?
Eric, you want to explain that?
Yeah, so, so we essentially annually approve all of our regular trips. And so this would be one of those trips that is on a regular rotation, it's regular cycle. So, so it's approved. And if we were to do something that was different, other than what we normally would do, we would bring that separately to the board for approval that way, that way. Cause otherwise, you know, like you said, every third year, the rotation is this. We've adjusted that a couple of years ago to be able to say, yeah, that's, that's what we do each year as part of our programming, part of what we offer.
Yep.
So you're in good shape.
Okay, that sounds very good. Thank you everybody for your time and attention.
If you had came with a trip to somewhere different, it might have been different, right? This, this fits the rotation, right? So you're good.
All right.
Just making sure we're doing it.
Or if you make a slot for school board members, right?
There you go.
We definitely want to attend.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is true that, um, we could bring, I mean.
There you go.
First of all, let's have your childhood span.
There you go, now you know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, our second topic is just kind of a look ahead to our January organizational meeting since shockingly January is not that far away. So yeah, I don't know.
A couple of things I just wanted to highlight. So as you know, in January, we will reorganize the board, working through things we do each, each spring or each January, I should say. The process will be reelection of officers. So I'll be thinking if that's something that you're interested in, in taking part on, that might be different than what you're doing now, something to give some time to think about. If you have questions about what the duties or roles are for any of the officers of the board, certainly reach out to myself or any of the current officers with that option there as well. We also will do some business organization organizing. So we, we choose the bank we use, we choose the attorneys that we use, we just designate those things. Not to, not that we can't go outside that list, but there's always kind of the official, if you will, go-to organization. One thing that has changed in the last year is that there's two newspapers in town now. And so we do have the option to, each year we have designate a, a official district newspaper. That's where we post all of our legal announcements, the budget publication that Matt did, no, last week or the week before, went out to our county news, that's our official newspaper. So next Monday, we'll be reaching out to the Pioneer and the County News to once again get bids from them on what their rates would be to be the official newspaper. We've had conversations in the past about being a, being a pretty neutral entity to maybe go out back and forth year over year between the two entities, but I think we want to see those bids before we make any final decisions on that. One was significantly different, that would certainly sway our discussion. The other thing that we will do at that meeting, which is something we do each year, is we designate committees. And so this is just the hard copy that you all have access to anyway, but this is just a set of what the committees look like, who's on them right now. Our past practice has been, you just be thinking about what you'd like to participate in. Is there, if there's something that interests you, something that is, something you haven't experienced yet and you want to try something different or something you've just been on for a year and you're, feel like you're just scratching the surface, so you want to stay there, just be thinking of where you want to go. And then we'll designate at that meeting, who would like to be on which committee. Just a couple notes on here, just because I want to, as committees evolve and committees move forward, as far as what the commitments are, are, they've evolved somewhat differently than what's listed on the annual schedule of how things work. So just some notes to the superintendent evaluation committee is really kind of been more of a quarterly meeting at this point. As you think about that, move into this, this part of it, part of that process. District personnel has actually been meeting monthly and based on the feedback from that committee and the, the way that particularly with staffing, the way it goes now, that, that is working. So keeping that going monthly is something to work with. The facilities committee has also adjusted to a monthly meeting. And so when you think about time commitment that you're available for, and that's been a very positive thing moving, just be much more in tune with the day-to-day work of our facilities with our district as opposed to just on a big project, now we're talking about it. DAC committee, we just had a conversation this last week about that and I talked about it at our last policy, our board meeting, we talked about the policy committee review that will adjust to six times annually. So it will adjust to basically every other month so that we don't have, we don't want to have two hour committee meetings, but we need to start getting some of that curricular and standard-based conversation into that meeting that hasn't been, as well as the results that's been happening there for that. So you can kind of see the summaries of the committees, certainly reach out to me if you have any questions or any of the board members who are currently on those committees as a reminder of who's where. Try to, try to balance them out as best we can. You know, three is a magic number just because four is a quorum, you can't have more than three on a committee with that. Negotiations, ebbs and flows, obviously. One thing that Julie and I did talk about is that if we do have groups that are continuing after the new year, it probably would behoove us to keep the same negotiation team working with those groups who has, who have already begun. However, there are several groups, our principals, our early childhood paras, our technology team, who have not started yet. And so if that negotiation team looks different as of our org meeting, one suggestion would be that new committee picks up with anybody who hasn't started yet and the prior committee finishes who's kind of in process, which right now is essentially just the teachers. Cause we just on Monday TA'd with the paras. District office group has had a initial discussion, haven't started with anything yet with them. Teachers are not going to be done anytime in the foreseeable future in terms of the next month or so. So that'll be one that will ongoing, be ongoing. Otherwise, if there is interest from other board members in being on the negotiations committee, we certainly could just make sure we wait till after the org meeting to schedule any initial meeting with any other group. So if that interests you, you're kind of tinkering around with it, just shoot me a note and let me know. And we just, we won't meet the last two weeks of December, probably with anybody anyway. But just in case somebody reaches out, I can put them off a little bit if that's the case. So if anyone's interested in that. That's an interesting committee and I think for the, I will say that so far this fall, the four groups that have settled, it's as, as gratifying of experiences I've had and since I've been doing this because we've been able to really support some competitive contracts for folks and people have felt good about where we've landed. We're not all done yet. The groups that are done are feeling good about life so far, so, and, and they deserve it because they do a lot of great work for us. So that's kind of what I wanted to cover about the organizational meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted to, yeah, it's definitely time to start thinking about committees and finding and knowing what the time commitment is for all the various committees and just kind of make sure that you kind of balance yourself. But, and then the official meeting would be January 4th. At that meeting, then we would set our meetings for the rest of the year also, whether or not they stay the same or whatever. But so January 4th is the, is our organizational meeting. MSBA offers a webinar every year called the Organizational Meeting. I've watched it every year for probably the last six years or so, and I find it very useful. That is Thursday, December 14th at 1:00. If you're not able to watch it live on Zoom, they will have it available as a recording in the, within the following weeks. So just kind of pay attention to your emails about that. I have found that to be very helpful just to prepare for the organizational meeting itself, so.
One thing I forgot to mention as I was passing it around, referring to something you had in front of you, this is this year's school board meeting schedule with what the schedule had been of committees prior. So I noted the ones that were different than what you have on your sheet coming around, but I realized that policy, finance, arena board, you probably want those, that information also.
Yep.
So you have that in front of you as well. So that's just one thing I didn't pass around while I was talking about.
Yeah, if anyone has any questions, yeah, the organizational meeting, this is a mandated thing, we need to have an organizational meeting and it has to be as soon as possible after the first Monday in January. So, which for us would be our Thursday, the January 4th.
You said January 4th.
January 4th, yep.
Yep. And typically when we send out that agenda, you know, your packet ahead of time, we will have the suggested school board meeting dates for the year on there. That's one that if you, if you have the opportunity to take a peek at it ahead of time and see what, any conflicts or anything like, didn't think about this or we didn't think, the fair is a different year this year, hated to think about that, that's something that we could check.
Yeah.
For sure. We oftentimes have a discussion between September and October. Do we go the week before school starts? Do we go the week after? You know, we have to move things from week to week sometimes because of those MEA, all those things that kind of, we typically schedule a work session in July. I think when I first started here, we didn't always do the work session in July, but lately it's been valuable for us. So talk to those things that are meeting as well.
Yeah, and same thing with committee meetings too, just because they're scheduled the second Monday monthly, it doesn't, the committee themselves can pick the best day that works.
Yes, yep.
So.
Yeah. It's more of, I would say that's more of a monthly, bimonthly, Matt.
Yeah.
We'll tweak the time and the day based on the committee's needs.
Yep. All right, let's move on then to our, well, unless there's any questions, then we'll move on to our final topic of discussion for tonight, which is continuing discussion about our facilities planning.
Right, well, thank you. And, and I don't have a, don't worry, I don't have an hour presentation for you tonight to work through. Just put a couple, a couple slides together that are more discussion prompts than they are informational. And what, the reason for that is because there really isn't any new information since we met last, but we haven't had a chance as a board to talk through what are some options? What are we, where are we going to head? And you know, if you recall, it was late summer, early fall, we had a conversation and it was, okay, the board needs to, you know, start giving the administration some direction on where we're going to head next and what we want to do. So I put together kind of just a compilation of materials here for us to think about. These are more reminders. I have them linked in front of me. So as we're discussing, I'm not going to take you through all the slides again, as we're discussing, I say, what way, what was that? What was that impact? We always can go back and just pick it up in our conversation. So you know, the presentation from May 23, that was the big comprehensive thing that took me over an hour to get through. You've got that access to everything there. Fall survey, when the results, and if you remember from the survey results, it was helpful, it was largely similar to the previous surveys in terms of support, right around 50/50 with that option, some genuine concerns and feedback. But what we talked about in our last conversation, there's not consensus that came out of that survey, certainly on the K6 option. So again, trying to discuss the options and kind of give some direction of what those could be. Go to the next slide, Caitlin. There you go. Yeah, so kind of, I kind of just wanted you to put this up for us and then it really is an opportunity for you to start talking through as a board, what do you think the next options are? So since, since we've been looking at this the last few years, we've kind of narrowed it down to, at this moment, some options here. So we certainly could build a K6 elementary school with use with the WIS addition, estimated cost $36 million. You've seen the tax impacts, you've seen the positives, negatives on that. Again, not consensus that that's the way to go. So the other option we could look at is we could look at a bond for repair and maintenance at Hartley and WIS. We could take the opportunity to do some, some work on that building. If you click into the potential projects list there, these were some of the things, and this is not by any means prioritized with, with, obviously you've not seen it yet. So we certainly can pick and choose these things, but some of the top things would be kind of some, some must do's, right? If we're going to do something like that. So we certainly could convert the steam heating to hot water, that needs to be done at Hartley. Need to replace the galvanized plumbing at Hartley, .2 million. $500,000 of miscellaneous repair and maintenance is a somewhat arbitrary number in the sense that we can get a lot of, a lot of fixtures changed, a lot of flooring done, a lot of paint done for $500,000. Roofing warranty could be renewed for that. Extending the parking lot. And so, and what that means is the low, the, do you want to, back to your slide, sorry. So I just want to show you the picture of what I'm looking at. No, I'm sorry. Go back to, I got it wrong. Go back to the spreadsheet and then click on, scroll down, there's a link down there. Down lower, there it is. And what, what one option could be, and this is just again, a brainstormed option, is we certainly could take, this is the bottom of the hill where the track is here, hill's here, several of these trees are unhealthy, whatever. We certainly could extend that parking lot down in this area and give yourself some drop off and pick up relief at Hartley. That option, that could be, could be certainly a potential option for that. So just an idea. If you go back to the spreadsheet, Caitlin, go back up there. Could renew, you know, renewing the roofing warranty at WIS, the chiller needs to be replaced at WIS. $200,000 is a high estimate in terms of the repair that we need to, or the updates and modifications that need to be done to the rooms here at Central that we can use for infant, toddler, childcare could be in there. And then of course, that, there's other things, like other, other needs. Do you want to, do you want to put a turf field on? Do you want to add a gym to the Hartley building? Those are some of the other things we could do. So those are just options. I mean, some of those basically line seven and above would be the things that really would be kind of your minimum to get you 15, 20 years down the road with those two buildings. It wouldn't change the instructional environment, wouldn't change the structure of the building, but you'd be fixed, you'd be repaired, you'd move yourself forward. Okay? And it might also give you some room in a, in a potential levy, or I'm sorry, referendum to do something else if you choose. We talked about activities early in the process and then haven't talked, the gym and the, and the, and the field, haven't talked about them in a couple of years, so we'd know that wasn't fit in the previous budget plan. That's an idea for that option. So, and then of course, you could go anywhere in that range you wanted to and pick and choose some of those different things. The asterisk next to the plumbing is that, that 1.2 million, we could fit that into an LTFM bond. And if, if the board chooses to go with kind of the next option on my slide, which is, we don't like any of these, bring me something else, then we probably would have to consider whether or not we, we bond against our LTFM to get the plumbing done sooner than later at that building, which doesn't impact taxes. It just, we pay that back over the course of 10 years off our LTM cost, LTFM cost. Cause that's probably the one thing that if we were to say, we don't like any of these ideas, get a team together, bring us something different, that's the one that's probably most pressing, based on the Department of Health's pressure on us to get something permanently fixed with that process. So those are ideas there. If you go back to the slide, Caitlin. Obviously there are needs, the tax impact, I'm going to pass these around because I did, I did have LRS put together this impact for us and there's a six and an eight. And just kind of take a peek at what that would look like if we were to do a bond of either of those, both of those amounts. And you, I'll wait till they get around and you can see that, you know, any bond is an increase, obviously, no doubt about that. But the, the tax impact would be obviously significantly smaller than a, than a. But the the tax impact would be obviously significantly smaller than a than a larger bond, like $36 million bond. Other thing to keep in mind is that the egg, the school tax credit is still in play. That still is a thing. And so if if 20% of what it comes to be about 20% of whatever we were to bond for is state funding, that would come to that. So you take 20% of 8 million and the states, you should have a six and an eight. Yep, okay. And so you can look at what those are, what that impact is. If I look at the $8 million, and I look at a $250,000 house, that's an increase of $34 a year on those taxes. So it's for each individual person to say whether that's affordable or not, but it certainly is much more reasonable than our larger bond option. It will also get us further down the road to decide what we could do. If the other option, too, certainly, and I think if you were to repair and do these maintenance projects at Hartley and WIS, I mean, it gets you, like I said, 15, 20 years down the road, and you can kind of see what you need, what the community is going to evolve, how it's going to work, what things go happen. There's some positives to that. The backside of both of those sheets gives you kind of the debt schedule and how that looks. So you can see where your stair step comes down in 2031 from our current bond. The gray would be like new, obviously, the new debt. And you can see that, you know, by 2039, you'd have everything, everything gone with this particular process when you think about that. So and then, of course, the third, the last bullet up there is, you know, we don't think we have the answer here, and so we'd like you to explore some other options. And we need you to get together with with the team, and and we'll get to with our with our facility consultants. We'll talk about a needs assessment, and we'll look at what other options we have, and we'll maybe do in their enrollment some study. There's some things we can do to look at our options. You know, these options came forward roughly four years ago as as the best options, right? Our community has evolved somewhat in that time, and so they may not be the best options anymore, but that's for the board to for direct us. There are risks with that. Like I said, we talk about have to probably have to do the water piping then if we're going to do that. We have to do, we probably have to, we have to determine a timeline, you know, because we can't be bring us back something and then we'll mull it over for another two years again. I think that puts us in a tough spot with our buildings. So it'll be a hey, let's get this back by next summer, we'll make a decision next summer type thing. But there's opportunities to opportunities to see just see more options, see more things that are out there, get together with it and decide what we want to do. So that's really the oh, and then the next slide is just timelines, just so you're aware of. If we were to do a mayor election, review and comment has to be in by January 5th. That's tight, but because most of the review and comment Colin already has in his facilities strategic strategic plan, that's managed. If we chose to do that, we could do it. Board resolution, March 1, August is your timeline, November, there's your timeline. There is a primary and a presidential election, of course, next fall. So those are tied to elections already happening. So as terms of cost of election to us, like a special election, there's already things happening those times, we wouldn't be burying the full brunt of that cost for an election, something to think about as you're thinking about your timelines as well, too. So that was hopefully most of the talking I have to do, other than pulling up documents for you as you may want them. And now Chair Anderson, I kind of turn it over to you to have a conversation about what's the board thinking.
Right. Well, if you could go back to the kind of our three options slide, yeah. So I as of at this moment, Eric has kind of identified three options. We don't, we're not going to vote on anything tonight, it's just a workshop. There's no reason why we can't give direction to the administration. We're favoring one of these options. And if we're not favoring any of these options, well, that's kind of option C, the third option. But if we are favoring either option one or two, then I think that we can use the timeline that that you've given us if we want to go out for something this year. Also, options one or two, I would say that we would kind of kick it back to certain committees, like our finance committee, our facilities committee, to determine, you know, what what would options one or two look like. If consensus as a board, we're saying option three, let's go back and explore other ideas. Again, we have committees that could kind of take the lead on those other ideas. But it's just, I don't, I don't think doing nothing is an option. I think our those those buildings do need some attention and looking at the if we wait until the high school bond is off the books, I mean, that's 2036, right? So that's a that's a long ways away, whereas, you know, putting some a smaller amount into Hartley and WIS, in Eric's opinion, it would get us 15 years possibly.
Well, and just, you know, we always hesitate to say it will get us.
I know.
Because that's what we that's what we thought eight or nine years ago when we were talking about our other projects, right? So we have to be cautious that things will evolve as they're just the best information we have right now. Those are the major repair, maintenance issues that would be long-term concerns at those two buildings. Yeah, with that option, too. Because it's a smaller bond, also, you kind of see the overlap. It's 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 finishing shortly after the time the other, the other one does, if that were the option there. And that gets you to the point where then you have a reset, a reset. You have the opportunity to determine if you need to do something larger at that time, you've gotten yourself, I mean, in that business world, they would call that, we're going to harvest the building right now. We're going to put some money into it to make sure that it continues to serve us the way it needs to, and then we're going to ride it out for a while. We're going to use it, we're going to harvest that that process, right? As opposed to risking something different, right? You know, the like I said, option number three, I think option number three, the last bullet up there, I think the timeline still still do apply somewhat. Because I think we set ourselves then a goal of by next summer, then we've got to have another proposal on the table, or something like that. Because, again, doing nothing puts us at further risk of of just something bigger that we just aren't aware of coming up could always come up. We have a plan that's that's better off.
So, yeah, so Eric and I have kind of spoken, so it's up for discussion. So if anyone wants to say their piece or ask questions or, yeah, go ahead.
Want me to start?
I feel like you want to.
I'll try to make this as short as I can. I still feel the best option for educating kids and long term is to add on to WIS and make it a K through six building. Having said that, I don't know if this is the best of times to do that. So I guess my recommendation would be we go out for some kind of a smaller bond. I would like to see it be less than $10 million. I guess I'll just leave it at that, a smaller bond, less than $10 million to do work that we feel we can get done at Hartley and at WIS. That's my suggestion.
Does the, you know, the list of things minus the couple margins, kind of those first seven, yeah, I think that my understanding is the idea is that those are the immediate needs. Those basically say, okay, it gets us back in a spot that we can get more time. You know, obviously, it doesn't get us 50 more years on that building.
Right.
Obviously, it gets us more than a year. You had thrown out the 15. I mean, does that potentially mean that somewhere between 10 and 20 years from now, we're probably back to the what we were a year ago of like, what do we do about Hartley? Do we replace, rip down the end? Would seem to me that's probably where we'd be at at that point, right? I mean, that's kind of the question for you or anybody.
Well, I think the question of what to do with Hartley doesn't go away. This just helps, this is.
A little bit later.
Yes. And it also gives time for our community to develop or settle into like what we need enrollment wise, 10, 15 years. We don't know, we don't know what the future is. Right now, our buildings are serving us enrollment wise, so.
Yeah, I think there's something to be said for, there has been more variables in the last four years of community dynamic than I've ever experienced going through one of these processes. And I've gone through this a couple of times, and it's usually once you see, here's the plan, we know what's going on, we can move. But there's just another change here, another change there. And so there is some benefit to, like you said, Grant, putting us in a good position. It could be 25 years. I just always hesitate to say how long it's going to be, but it does give us the opportunity to see where the community goes in the next several years, put it that way, when you think about that. So yes, that $5.9 million, that $6 million on your first column, that's probably the minimal to get us where we need to go. And then anything above there could be some other options we have to consider when you think about that. We could combine, we could do both. We could do a LTFM bond, doesn't impact tax taxes. Doing some of these projects takes pressure off our LTFM, and still do a $6 million bond, and then that potentially that field project's on. Those are some things you could think through.
When you talk about gym addition at Hartley, can you, how would we do that?
Just just by square footage drawing, if you go back to their document, Caitlin. And this is just, we just drew it up by square footage to see how it would look. Yep, that one. Just scroll it on down. It's off to the east side of the building, is where that potentially could fit. Yeah, so.
Takes away all your windows on them classrooms.
It does. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, when I.
So you'd have two gyms, huh?
We'd have a gym and a cafeteria.
Gym, that's realistic.
I mean, what you'd have.
Which would open up programming options.
Correct, oh, yeah. Right now, we're right now, sharing the gym and cafeteria is harder than people would think it is, as far as schedules go and getting things done.
So a couple of us were there once talking to Ben, and he talked about the fact that, you know, you have to shut the gym down at a certain time, you turn into a cafeteria, and then you have to do it the reverse. You really are limited in what you can use gym for and when you can use it.
And that's the that's really the that's the primary reason in my mind, if you were to consider a new gym at this time, to consider Hartley as opposed to consider WIS. You could put it on the back of WIS, like our other other model has, too. But that wouldn't impact, that would not help the cafeteria classroom part of it.
But basically, a gym addition, wherever we would put it, would be 3.7 million or whatever.
Yeah, that's what the estimate and estimate right.
Yeah, estimate.
Question on the LTFM bond, when you said that, does that doesn't impact tax because we're sort of borrowing against ourselves and paying it back?
Correct. So basically, you take you bond against your LTFM, and correct me if I'm wrong here, then every year when you get your LTFM allocation, it's minus the amount of that that you're paying yourself back over 10 years.
So it does reduce your LTFM available money for the subsequent years.
So correct. So if so, it actually is could be most effective if you pair it with a small building bond, which would then take pressure off your LTFM plan in general. And so you might be able to handle a little bit less funding for a while as you do it that way. That's what combination of the funding could help.
When you borrow against that, does that push it to prevailing or not?
I don't know. Do you know the answer to that?
I don't.
Ask that question.
What do you mean by that?
Prevailing wages are a higher rate.
Oh, got it. So your your construction costs.
Your when you bid the job, you have to cover prevailing wages and then pay your workers that wage versus what your normal wage is.
Sure. I don't know, I've not read anything that would indicate that changes, like, I don't know that off the top of my head, for sure.
And we've, we've done that for other projects.
We have, we just paid one.
It just depends on where it comes from.
Yeah.
What's the difference between prevailing wage and union scale? Are they the same?
They're close.
They're close. Which one's higher?
It gives union an equalizes.
Okay.
Is the theory, let's put it that way. That's the theory, but I can tell you some other stuff about it later.
It's the idea on paper, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's the same, it's the same funding mechanism. So we shouldn't really change that any, but I think I'm like, I would say at 100% confident.
Are you, would it be better to go with a bigger, smaller bond and not use the long-term facilities maintenance money as much, or would it be better to use all the long-term facilities maintenance money you can do and then build the bond on top of that? Or is it a horse apiece?
It's probably a horse apiece to some degree. The difference would, the only thing I'm thinking of is the other two big ones that that could be on here but are not, because I had them on here, are you could also renew your roofing warranty at high school and renew your roofing warranty here. I didn't put them on there because they weren't applicable to what we're talking about this moment. Those are the two things that are coming in the next five to seven years on our LTFM plan that are going to be high dollar items, and I'll look up exactly what it is, just so I have that for you.
Wouldn't, I guess, a question would for me, what, when would, how long ago would we have done any other roofing projects outside of the bonds that we have, the we have going on currently that we're paying?
I think.
When the high school was was redone, they did the roof there.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that, I don't know off the top of my head. It would have been within the within the time they had to be replaced for warranty. So I know that. Hasn't been a big roofing project since I've been here.
Three, four years, right?
Yeah.
So when you say renew roofing warranty, is that actually redoing the roof?
Well, there's two ways of going about that. You can just do another topping on it and grab, what, another 10, 15 years?
Yeah, that's usually what that's usually what these dollars are.
So then that that would match how long we're going to be paying.
It's doing a bunch of work to extend your warranty.
Yes, yep. And the central to do that at central would be, I'm sorry.
And one thing with that style, I believe that's a guyland roof. I mean, you just make the call, they come take care of it, is in theory how it's supposed to be.
Once you've done that initial, then it's fully covered for that time.
Yeah, it's the warranty concept, yeah. Maybe there are $350,000 to do the central one, so it's not really a major concern. It's the the high school one, that $1.6 million, but that's because that was just done. So there's not, that one's not going to be a time sensitive issue. So I don't think either one of those probably come into play here. So I don't, to your original question, using that combination, all depends on what you want to do.
The interest rates between a bond and long-term facilities, are the interest rates the same or are they different?
I don't think they pay interest.
You're still, you're still issuing a bond.
Yeah, it's the same.
Yeah, so I think it's the same.
Yeah, and they're estimating what 5% on the paper you had there, but so it'd be this, it's a bond, just the same. Find your, you find your best rate, sell your bonds. The other thing to think about, too, is if there's, you know, it would, it would be somewhat miniscule if you wanted to break some things up, but you certainly could say, okay, the $6 million, that's kind of the must do, we need to get that done to get us the next 15 or so, whatever, 20 years, whatever it is. Question two, should we put a gym onto Hartley? And then you see what the see what the taxpayers think about that. What the the risk that you run when you start adding the extra projects on is that it would be a bummer for someone to think, I just don't think that's needed, so I'm going to vote no for the whole project. So you I really think there is some merit to really asking for what you need. And then there is some some merit to asking a second question for something else that might be a, this would be good to have. And I would argue you need them, too, but community, community insight is different, right, on those things. Right.
Oh, another question. Track and field at the high school, what is that, does it need to be redone in the near future, or it'd be a nice thing to do in the near future?
So the the track needs to be done probably in the next several years. That needs to be redone. The field is a nice field, it'd be putting turf on that field.
So that so this 1.2 would be a turf field and then a new track?
Right.
And was this talked about in like five, six, seven years ago before the high school project? Or was that?
Not the turf field part of it.
I don't think so. And it came up in our very first task force, was the task force before our task force, and it and it ended up not becoming a priority at the time. Because it was just some things we could think about down the road.
The tradition of the school board, since I've been on the school board, which is now several years, has been to focus on academics and not athletics. But you travel around other area districts and they, yeah, so ours is certainly starting to look different, but it's it is still a good field. I mean, or it's not, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, the trend is just the turf, that's all, yeah.
Well, honestly, like every item on this list, including school, whatever, it's always where's the priorities fit versus the cost? That's where the opinions come in, the cost benefit.
Right, and that that's not necessarily. Right, and that, that's not necessarily, um, the be all, end all list. I mean, there's, there's something that, that, maybe there's something on here that I'm not thinking of that you as a board member are thinking, hey, have you thought about this? Um, that you can, you can put on, on something like that, so. I think that based on the feedback from our community, our conversations thus far, um, it's, we know that we need to do, if we need to do something, that, that there's some things that's pressing, I know that. But there's not a big appetite for a lot right now, we know that. And so I think we need to be conscious of that as we think it through. The, the urgency for me, um, is probably a little bit more, as you've all heard about the county talking about the jail potential project. Um, if, if that, if that multimillion dollar project goes through, that does not take a referendum vote, commissioners decide that and they move forward, which is fine, that's what, that's part of how the statute works. But if that's a $35 million project, that now, if, so if, if we're behind that, now we're back to the other conversation of, look at how high our taxes are. Now, if you're going anywhere, that conversation, so. I don't say that as though we need to jump off a cliff, but there is some urgency there. And, and I've talked to Michael about that, he knows what we've got going on, I know what he's got going on. Uh, and both entities have to do what they have to do, so that's fine. But we'll want to certainly be aware of it as we're moving forward with things.
Well, I mean, I really am curious, like as a board, do we have a general consensus of where we would give direction to the administration? I mean, I'm personally not comfortable with option three, I just feel like, I feel like we have good options, I feel like we have, I'm not ready to go back to the drawing board yet, I'm not saying that if the general consensus of everyone else sitting here is like, let's go back to the drawing board, I'm not going to argue against it, I mean, that's fine. I, I'm, I'm in favor of one or two, um, and I feel like, um, the impact on the community, um, probably option two is, is a, is a, a good thing to explore. Again, we're not, we're not saying we're going out for a vote, it's just what direction are we giving to the, to the administration, to our committees to come back and, and recommend something more, but I, I feel like, um, I like, I like option two, but I, do we have a general consensus of the board? Yeah.
Pros and cons and going against your LTFM money. You know, I'd like to see a little bit of that, um, but also to, if you do that, what is our other, you know, there's things that aren't on our list, but what would fit? What's the timeline of those other items with the payment if we were to go that route? You know what I mean? So we're not cutting our own throat by, if we were to look at, uh, you know, an LTFM bond, buying, you know, bonding.
Yeah.
Okay, you know, playing that a long-term layout with everything else in the district.
Yeah.
You know, that, just so that's.
So we spend.
Looked at.
So we spend about $700,000 a year on LTFM. So a $1.2 million bond over 10 years would be about $120,000 a year, am I doing that math right? Roughly plus interest, 140, 150, um, so you'd be taking your LTFM down by about, what's that, 15, 20%? Like that, that would be the impact on that. Theoretically though, we've got, we've got money in the budget every year for some of those things that might be wiped out with your, with your other bond project, and so then you could handle having a little bit less, uh, for those options when you think it through.
If you did the LTFM bond, I think LTFM money could only go towards certain things, you can't do some other things with it. Would the LTFM bond money have the same guidelines around it?
It would, and that's, so LTFM can only repair and replace, it can't upgrade, it can't build anything new. Basically, I mean, the modern version of whatever you're putting in, right? But it repairs and repla, and, and, you know, replaces, doesn't build anything new. So because you're fixing pipes and replacing pipes, that would fit that, that option.
So with the bond or without the bond, we're doing the same things with them, it's just we can do a bunch of that sooner and have a little less money down the road.
Well, and then whether or not we do a bond, the LTFM bond and also a small, smaller six, six or eight million dollar referendum bond, I mean, that could be something that is a recommendation that comes back to the board, and we don't have to decide that right now.
Right, because if you go to the next, if you go to the next slide again, this is a reminder of Caitlin. If the board has any consensus on which option they want us to go, I mean, and then, then also we'd like to have a conversation, or at least some feelers of, are we pushing anything earlier than November or is November our plan? Is August our plan? Because if, if November is the plan and we think that smaller bond option is where we want to go, then the facilities committee and the finance committee, and I can do a lot of work in the next three months to bring some recommendations back to the board, um, by, by March or April, to say, here's what we propose would be the bond for $6.25 million, um, and we would do this, and here's the projects, and then you go. And here's the long-term impact, here's what you do for that, work it through. Some of that work we could continue to do, um, if that's where, if that's where you want to go. If it's something that the board's thinking, no, that's a, that's a Band-Aid, we don't want to go there, then that's the option three really, because I'm not seeing appetite for the, the K6 building at this time. But I'd love to hear other thoughts.
When you, when you talk to, um, Mike Johnson up at the colony, what timeline are they on for making a decision about what they're going to do with the jail?
There's informational sessions next week, I don't know what their votes, their voting looks like.
The 12th, they got a meeting.
This month yet?
Open to the public.
Okay, but I'm thinking their decision is going to come fairly soon?
I think they're behind where we're at, you know, they're, they're looking for community input right now.
Okay.
I mean, what I would like to say, you know, I still believe like Dave said, you know, to have combined cave for six campus would be great, but the timing is not good and I don't think the option one is that I would like to go. Option two, uh, we know that the option two, if we, those projects that you had for Hartley or WIS or Hartley, we know that something else will happen in 10, 15 years. Why we would invest to put a gym or park in, in Hartley, then eventually in 10 years, we will leave the building and go somewhere else. So I mean, if we go for bond, you know, small one, I would like to see different options, the projects. Because I, you know, like, I don't think it.
I agree, I feel like if it's, if we know that this is just, like you said, a Band-Aid, so we're just doing the small bond to buy some time, because right now is not the best time for WISICA to do a, a K through six option. But I agree, I think we need to be very, like, purposeful in what we choose. Because like you said, I mean, yeah, everybody would love a new gymnasium, but, um, at 3.7 million for something on Hartley, that's, how long is it going to be there? You know?
So that's option A. Right, right, yeah. So that's what that is, that's none of the extra stuff, that's just.
Yeah, the, the gym, that, that was your option, Steve, like a.
No, but it's extending parking lot, right?
But that's.
Gym addition, yeah, well, I'm, I'm just saying, I would.
You take it off, certainly.
And.
And you have about 3.3 million for basically just Hartley related stuff there, which I think is what your concern is, right? You don't really want to, you feel like, why should we put 3.3 billion in Hartley?
But I think 15 years in a building, spending three and a half million.
Isn't a lot.
No, I don't think at all.
But again, just being purposeful and making sure.
I, I agree with that, which is why, any, this, this is just a suggested list. I mean, this is not a final list by any.
Not all suggestions.
Well, right, well, I, I don't.
Right.
Suggestion was not the right, I'm just saying that.
Only thing on there that I would take off is extend parking lot.
Yeah.
Everything else on that option A.
Right.
Is kind of a must-do, right?
But as far as being purposeful, I mean, that's, that's what the committee word would be, I mean, that's where, that's what, and, and additional board discussions in general. I mean, yes, this, we do not, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and for your point, I'm sorry.
Well, just go, go ahead.
I hope you were done.
No, I'm not done, but just go ahead, I can, I can say stuff.
There's the adjust.
Don't lose, don't lose your thought.
I was going to say, to your point, I, I agree, it's hard, it might feel harder to sell to the community to say, here, we want to put this money into Hartley, when we kind of have already proposed, let's not do Hartley, and it's, it's hard to want to do that, which is for me, one of my reasons that I kind of supported or like the idea of the K6 because I didn't really want to put money into Hartley when it's not, it's not the long-term plan. But I also recog, so, so for that reason, I support the K6 addition at WIS. But I also see that the community is clearly divided, maybe where's board is divided, there's, there's not the support for it, I recognize that. Which then gets me probably similar to where you're at Julie, that, okay, we need to do something to get us some time, which is probably like a $6 million here or some combination of that in the LTFM, because we have, we have to get down the road a ways. If we don't have the support now, is it going to change in two years? Probably not that quick, but in 10 years? Think, who knows what will change, and at least if we can buy us 10 plus years, that's probably reasonable, that's probably right.
I think, I think that's something we've seen coming for quite a while is that Hartley has a lot of needs. And if we go more short-term thinking instead of long-term thinking, that's fine. But you're going to run into this, how much money do you stick into Hartley to keep it going before the public might say, well, now you've stuck all that money into Hartley, now you want to add on to WIS? They're going to say, oh, that probably wasn't such a good idea. So, so where, to me, it's like walking a really fine line. How much do you put into Hartley to buy us more time to get us farther down the road without people getting upset with us because, well, now you stuck all that into Hartley, now you can't walk away from it because you put too much into it, so.
Dee, do you want to continue your thoughts?
I just want to finish, you know, I still, but the option two, like I said, I would prefer a new option, the third option that go back, but if everybody agree with the option two, you know, then I would like suggest or go with the elections in November 2024, because it's, you know, presidential, we will have more people definitely come and, you know, decide for WISICA.
I agree, I feel like that makes us more transparent if we keep it in November.
Your turn.
I don't know, I just, I can't, I can't get over the idea that if we go from a four-site or a three-site facility down to a two-site facility, that we're going to save money. We're going to save money, it's just, you know, put the money up front, we're going to save the money. That's why I support the K6 building, turning WIS into a K6 building, is because I just feel there's just some, there's, there's a lot of cost savings there. I don't know what's the oper, I'd have to ask Matt or whatever, what's the operational cost of each of the buildings? You know, excluding, excluding, uh, excluding, uh, teaching, the academic part of it. What, what is it, what's it costing us to, to run them two buildings? And what would the cost of a new build there, a, a re-modding building or a K6 building? I mean, I just can't get over, there's, there's got to be cost savings there someplace. And I, I look at putting, you know, a million or two million into a parking lot at, at Hartley, I just think we're just, we're just putting money down the drain, like Dave says, you know, here, you know, I, it's down to pay me down, pay me now or pay me later, it's, Hartley's like a car with 200,000 miles on, you put a new set of tires on a car that's got 200,000 miles on. Hartley's lived its life, in my, in my estimation, it's lived its life. I feel really bad, when Dave and I were there a few weeks ago or months ago, look at third grade classrooms down in the basement. There's classrooms there that I don't know would, that would, if they would pass an egress things for us, for our home that has, that has bedrooms in the basement. I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about that, yeah, they're two ways out, but, but then the classrooms is, the classrooms, the way I understand is that David, we saw that too, they got one door going in and out of the classrooms, is that correct? I don't, I just, so, I don't know, I just, I just feel Hartley has lived its life and, and the operational cost of that going to one operational cost at, at the intermediate school would, would offset a lot of the, would offset a lot of the, um, expense of building, that's, that's, that's where I'm at on it, you know? In my world, it's not going to make any difference, you know? In my age, it's not going to make any difference, you know, what you do, you know, I, it's totally, you know, it's up to the community, what they want to do, you know? And like I say, you know, we got, it's like asking the girl to the prom, all they can say is no. You know, so, huh, I don't know, it, it's, it's all they can say is no, you know, I, I'm, I think we should go for it anytime, so. That's my, that's my.
What do you two guys think about the farm community right now? Are they more apt to support a bigger bond, a smaller bond?
I don't know, we got, we got folks out there that are not afraid to pay $10,000 an acre of land, I can tell you that. So I'm not sure how that translates into, into that, but you know, we got that, then we got that state funding comes that relieves, that relieves a lot of the property tax that would happen on the land. The farm community is in the same boat as the people in the city, or the city. So we all pay, we pay our taxes on our residence, that's where we pay the taxes. It's minimal on the, you know, school taxes is minimal on, on ag land. But we get, you know, as ag, you know, we get, we get stuck with, with a lot of county taxes, you know?
I talked to a variety of them, you know, kind of, they all have their different views, just like the rest in town. Some of them are, school, great, let's give it to them. You know, some of them are smaller farmers, like, ah, I just don't like seeing it, and, you know, it's, both, it's, it's all over the board, it depends on their views.
Dan, you had mentioned the LTFM one, are you thinking that maybe that alone is the best option? Or that with something else, or it feels like you started with that?
I just had a question towards it, you know, there's, there's more to that question than I guess, you know, can, if we were to go that route, to, to the so-called Band-Aid right now is kind of how it's labeled, you know?
It's called a bridge.
Yeah, bridge, right. We won't have to peel it off.
Right, right.
So, um, but, you know, like we all, there's, there's a lot of thought there, now it just doesn't seem to be the fitting time. And, you know, then, then the other question that can be is, well, when is? Well, we, we know that we have, at least from my, my viewpoint, I see some wheels turning in our community, trying to get some things rolling, some grants, whatnot, um, and, and promotion, trying to be out there, and we have, you know, another hurdle at the county that you brought up. To me, that tells me we don't know where we'll be next month. We might have a better idea in a year to two. You know, that's kind of my viewpoint on, with the knowledge and topics that I hear. So when I, I hear this LTFM, I'm, I'm thinking, okay, is there a possibility we can do this bridge? But we see where we're at in that two to three years, or two, you know, are our wheels going to be picking up momentum to where we can go after a larger bond and pay that LTFM bond off with it and do more option?
You certainly could do that, but can you, because you can use, you can use bond dollars to, that capital bond dollars, you have the flexibility with, be able to work that, work that off.
Does that, did that come out clear though, I mean, what they just laid out?
Yeah, the, the challenge with the LTFM bond is it really only gets you one or two things on that list. In fact, you couldn't even do the steam to hot water.
Okay.
And because it, really a million and a half-ish is about the extent of where we'd be talking about doing that at the highest end. So it doesn't get you very far. What you potentially could do is, if, if we were to, you know, determine that from, as from a board perspective, that, you know, we really want to hold true to, we don't want to do anything until this, until the high schools, you know, paid off, off of books, if you will, the smaller option that we're talking about gets you pretty close to that, which gets you a little more flexibility than the, the LTFM option there, and it doesn't, doesn't hamstring your LTFM. Next, so then you have that in your back pocket should something big come up, there's none on our list.
And that falls back to, did you, you know, we need to see, is there other ones that it would affect? You know, we, we, we should be able to predict the big stuff.
Yeah, there isn't anything else big, the only, the only big thing in the next 10 years on the LTFM plan other than this stuff is those roofing warranty. That are like, those are the must-dos in the next 10 years that have, we've got to fit in the budget. Other than that, there isn't any really more than a couple, maybe a one, $200,000 window project or something he's got in there. But that's over the course of four years. Other than that, it's pretty minimal. So it would be the, what might come up, because we have weather go out or something right now. And right now it wouldn't bother us, but let's say it's really a really cold December, that's where you tap in sometimes the LTFM bond as an emergency fund. Sometimes to get that fixed, you could do that, so. Sometimes there's a benefit to doing what you know you have with the bond, having the LTFM for that emergency. But that's two different ways to look at it. But that's two different ways to look at it.
Well, and we can control the LCFM, right? I mean, that's under control.
It is. We just can't do anything new with it. It can only repair and replace. And so when you, when you do a bond project or bond funding, you have flexibility to build something with that. That's something different. The other thing to think about too is just when you think about what the other options could be. You know, are we thinking, how big do you want to go, right? There's other options we can do. I mean, that's, I don't know what the other options would be. That's why you have to explore them, right? Good ideas, but it's probably not going to be cheaper than what you see here.
And then, you know, and I know one of the topics is a gymnasium at Hartley. And I know other communities do pair up with their community on, you know, certain things of that nature, gym, so they can, you know, build into a community center.
Sure.
You know, I don't know how the money transfers on some of that stuff.
Yeah.
I'm just, you know, you know, there's, with the talk of why would we put a gymnasium on Hartley if, you know, some people's goal is let's get away from that. But some people's goal is I don't want to leave that spot. You know, you can build a gymnasium on a building by a pathway. You can detach it, tear off that whole building and add on the other, add on to the other side of it. And then when that project's done, you demo that whole building gone and put a parking lot there for your new building. So there's ways to go about that and not waste the three to four million that you invested.
I agree with that. And I feel like any, if we go with this smaller bond idea, I don't, I mean, and if we get 15 years out of that, out of those, our buildings still, I don't think that that's a waste of dollars at all. And if we add a, if we get 15 years out of a gym and better use of our, that facility, I don't think that's, I don't think that's, I mean, it's a question for, I mean, it's not a small dollar amount. It's definitely a question of do we, do we want this included? But I don't think it's a waste of dollars. If we can, if we're really able to get 15 years, I mean, and I know that that's, you can't give an actual date, but, but we should be able to get much closer to the end of the, the high school bond. And yeah.
And there's, and with that, you know, the gym is just laying this out there so you guys can think on it. And I don't want to say this is exactly what I want or what's the right thing to do. But if you take that gym from the east side and you move it to the west side, you still do your parking lot, but you do a drive through to go to that loop. And you can bypass a lot of that traffic away from the school to help with the congestion.
Good.
And come around, back around the ball field on the end. But.
Options.
Yeah. But you know what? Now, you know, if we were to push for a vote, I say November as well because you get more community input.
My only question with November is I worry that our message about what we're asking the community to consider would get lost in the political message. So I, that's, that would be my only push for an August versus November. Just because I feel like we could be much more clear about what we're asking the community to consider. Or at least our message wouldn't get lost in the ether of everything else going on at that time. So.
The hope that it'd be more of an informed vote.
Yes.
Also, it gives us more time to communicate and know from here till then.
You know, when you look how many people went to the elections, you know, a couple of months ago. You know, I feel like you, you will not get more than 500 people to come. And do we want to make decision on such a small percentage of Wasika?
I understand, I understand that point. You want to give as many people the opportunity to vote on it. I just, I do really, I'm not joking, but I really do worry that our message would get lost. So.
Well, the decision for today.
Yes.
Or not even a decision, but the guidance for today. If you go back to the other slide again, the last slide.
Is to pick an option.
Is, well, no, I'm saying that the only thing that we really would need to get our, get our horses moving would be if you were to tell me right now we want to go for something in May. Then we'd have, we'd have three weeks to get that review and comment prepared. August versus November, I'm hearing more November's than I am August right now. But that, we have till April to make that decision.
Yep.
And by that time, we probably have a, maybe a clearer picture what we, what we're looking for. So what I'm hearing, and I haven't heard this from quite ever, but you're thinking at Alyssa, but I'm hearing some consideration of what could those projects look like for that smaller dollar value? That the facility committee and the finance committee could hammer out over the next 90 days and then through those things. I don't know. Thoughts, I didn't mean to point at you specifically, but just whatever other thoughts we have.
I think I would like to see some, the, yeah, so the committees kind of come back with some more concrete, like this is what it would look like. So.
I'm not hearing anybody say, yeah, go K six right now. So that, that gives me, that gives some direction, right?
Charlie did.
Right, exactly. Oh, yeah. Right, exactly right. Yeah, thank you. Consensus on that, I should say. Right.
All right. Are we comfortable having administration continue with exploring a smaller bond? We're not making any decisions, but I mean, yeah, or nothing's formal. But yeah.
Two thoughts. So the, if we, an LTFM only, it sounds like that's buys us a couple of years, but it's not going to address all the things on the, really have to do these. And those are going to come back in a couple of years. And so we may still need to have to consider if there's more bonding.
I'm not confident that buys us a couple of years.
Maybe not even.
Okay. So what if we have this election in November and it doesn't pass? And we're doing a small bond? Then we go that LTFM bond route because we don't have a choice? Or those things just sit there and don't get done? And we just have to deal with it?
Probably a little bit of both. Yeah. We look at that and say, okay, what do we need to do for, for a safety perspective? I mean, I forget, I think it was there and we had a conversation, a comment a few while ago. There's a lot of comfort issues and a lot of instructional challenges at Hartley. I mean, if you want to be ticky tack to the, to the line, the building is safe. The building is healthy. Lead water pipes can't be mitigated forever. Department of Health is starting to get a little cranky with when are you going to have a permanent plan for us? Can't just put filters on those forever. Everything else is, is, is safe for the time being. So if it doesn't pass, then you continue to think what the next plan is, right? Through that, yeah.
Do you know, for applying for that health and safety bond for lead pipes?
I know that Colin just brought my attention today.
Okay.
Yep. So, yes, we will be. He just popped in today. We were prepping for today's conversation.
How much is that?
Not bond grants.
How much is that?
Like up to $15,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It'll be something.
Yeah, fixtures.
Also, I guess the consideration of doing a smaller bond, like the six or the eight or whatever, if that buys us X amount of time, how do we feel or how confident do we feel that if it's 15 years? In 15 years, do you think we'll have support or a different situation? That we can support a, a school? Will, will support be the same? That is, I guess, a consideration for.
Like Eric said, the last four years there have been so many variables and Wasika's really kind of struggled. So.
Maybe we'll be struggling the same, but at least we'll be 15 years down.
Here's the other thing, Grant. How many of us are going to be sitting in these chairs?
Well, I know Dave will still be sitting here 15 years from now.
Maybe, maybe several of us. My guess would be none of us. So how do you, you know, how do you move this whole plan forward when the people who originally made the plan aren't here anymore?
Yeah, I think a smaller bond wipes the slate clean. Whatever the next, what, in 15 years, whoever's sitting at this table, we'll start all over. I mean, November, what's the best, what's the best thing for Wasika?
The one conversation we have not had a lot during this whole process is enrollment. And what enrollment has patterned the last five years is not growth, right? We've had, it's, it's been predicted. We've seen it. We haven't had a huge pandemic dip any more than anybody else. But what 15 years from now you may see is if you have buildings that are now 60% full, some of that decision might be made for or at the time. Or if you're versing at the seams again, you need to change the thing because the community has really picked up, then you have some opportunities. So the, the current pattern and the current modeling is to steady off with enrollment. But just like Alyssa just mentioned, the pandemic has changed some of our predictive abilities on some of that the last few years. And so that's not one we've talked about a lot. But I, it's a bummer. It's hard for it when you start to get a district that has four buildings that are all partially full. Then your efficiencies really go down and you really struggle with that. But if there's growth, then you have to have room for that. So if you build, I think that was comment you made earlier. If you build a K six, there's not room to grow. If you grow, then you're at risk there. We have plenty of room to the west out there, so we could in that model. But then it becomes, how big do you want that school to be? All those things we talked about in the past, right? And so that's the advantage that maybe 15 years gets us is seeing what the community evolution looks like somewhat, in my opinion. I don't love that idea. I think, I do think that instructionally, and this is because the K five and K six is what elementary schools are in a lot of places. Couldn't say all of them be irresponsible, but a lot of places. And efficiencies of, for example, right now, I'm paying two overloads to a teacher at Hartley right now because I can't travel somebody back and forth for one class period twice a week. And so we don't have enough sections to have another teacher, right? And so there's some of those middle little tiny things that long term, K six is more efficient. But again, you also have to have support for it. You have to have the comfort level with it. We're landlocked over there, which gives everything that much more of a, of a dynamic. I wish, quite frankly, Hartley was in the condition WIS was in and states were vice versa. Because building a K six on that site might feel more comfortable for some folks. But that building's not the same base to work from, size and all that kind of stuff. But I appreciate the feedback night tonight and just the conversation. Because I do want to, I want to continue to move us forward. But I'm certainly not in a position to say, here's what I think at the will of the board is not to go that direction. So that's what I was asking for tonight.
Well, I feel like, I feel like our facility and our finance committee can certainly continue exploring the smaller bond option. And we as a board can choose to accept that or reject it. We can still, we could still go back to option C and say, let's start all over. We're not, we have not thrown anything off the table yet, I don't think, right?
Well.
I mean, it's just time.
Yes, but.
Yes.
If we come, if we come back in 90 days and you say, we don't like any of those ideas, then your superintendent is probably going to tell you, we probably got to fix those water pipes.
Yep. Yes.
We got to get that done. LTFM bond would be what I'd propose. Well, we're trying to figure it out still.
Yep.
We don't have, that's, that's why if, if this just is not comfortable and it's back to the drawing board in general, sooner we know that, the better. So 30, 90 days from now, coming back with a list of projects that equal five and a half million that the committees feel is manageable and the board's saying no. Then we're going to come back and saying, well, we got to get some of that stuff addressed. Maybe that LTFM bond's not going to take. And there's more urgency with it at that point.
Yep.
My point is that.
I agree with that. Yes. There you go.
Um, maybe you don't know, I don't know either. I could look it up tonight. But on that grant, do you know when they would award that?
25, I think is what.
Oh, it wouldn't be this year yet.
I think it's, I think it's 2025, but I don't have it off the top of my head. Like, just had a quick conversation with Colin today.
All right. Well.
Can I throw one last thought?
Yes. Yeah.
Great. When I think about all of these decisions, like.
Awarded next year, payable 25.
Okay. Trying to think of what should be the basis of our decision on these. You know, obviously our responsibility is to provide instruction to make sure kids go through school, graduate, become well-balanced adults, world-class workforce, all of that stuff. Which, which I think we have facilities and can do that right now. You know, are there better ways? Certainly. But we also have to live within our means and we can't, we don't have unlimited money to do that. Part of me also says, well, there's a lot of discussion, what about our community? How do we, how do we grow our community? We need more business. We need more people. We need all those kinds of things. One thing I consider is how do we get more people? How do we have a family who comes in and says, should we live here? Should we not? Maybe they all weren't involved. So it doesn't matter where they work. They just want a good place to live. And what kind of schools we have and the what, basically what we provide facilities and learning, will build that or not build that? If we don't have good on those things, families aren't going to come here and we'll, we'll probably go down. So for me, part of the investment or the consideration is whatever we spend, be it 8 million, be it 36 million, is our investment towards the community to build that, to get more families, to get growth, to get more opportunities. So from that standpoint, I guess I agree with Charlie that, you know, that's part of our investment. The county and the city talk about, well, what do we do to get more business? And our position in that is to make sure we have good schools, good facilities. And to me, it's probably worth that. I recognize all the differences, so maybe that's not the right sport. But I think we have to consider that when we help decide what to do of, how do we make sure we're doing the best for the community to help the community grow? Because that's, that's our part, huh?
And I think, I might speak for everybody about it. I take it as I think we're on the same page to help with the community and the growth, but it's a double edged sword.
Certainly.
And it's got to.
Because we also have to find what is the commitment.
Yeah, because then we come back to the three letter word tax.
Yep.
So.
All right. A good discussion?
Yeah. So what I'm hearing, just to close up, what I'm hearing is that I will begin work in our next meeting with the facility committees and the finance committees. Finance, it probably won't bother you this month with the yet. So a lot of things going on, levy and such. We'll talk about, we'll talk about these in the next couple of months and really exploring an option of a smaller bond, which projects could they be? How would, how would an LTFM bond fit into that or not? And then have that conversation with the greater, with the larger board. In fact, I probably will wait until, we have, we have facility committee in December. I think we do.
Well, it's the week after Christmas.
What's the week after Christmas? Okay, then we won't. And then I'll be here, but I don't know if you all want to be or not. But then, but if we, if we have any committee realignment in January anyway. Maybe January, we'll start with that conversation with committees. And we'll plan on aiming for an April 1st conversation with the greater board. But here's what we think. And again, you always could be, we don't have an answer right now with everything. I, and in the meantime, just continue to have conversations about what makes sense, what's how we support students. And I, I think more than anything else, we want to just make sure that we're forward-thinking as much as we can, not putting good money after bad, but understanding that bridging sometimes is appropriate. Like I said, this isn't a, this wouldn't necessarily be a, probably shouldn't use that word. Isn't necessarily a Band-Aid so much as it is a bridge to the next step. And it's, I agree with what Dita said earlier. I think your base ask is as minimal as it possibly can be. And then is there anything else you want to do? If you're going to go this route, if there's anything else you want to do, maybe that's a second question. If there's something else you want to think about. But I think it's, then that's where you maybe start with. You don't, you don't get, you don't get a want confusing your need. Yeah.
All right. There's no other discussion points on this issue.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
One last question. How is your foot?
Supposed to be off the couches in two weeks. We'll see.
Two weeks? Just one broken bone?
One broken bone, but I pulled some pretty good tendons.
You have to have surgery?
No. Therapy.